Good evening, the City of Boston zoning Board of Appeal hearing for November 6th, 2025 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature this year. The new law allows the Board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings through June 2027. This hearing of the Board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being recorded. In order to ensure this hearing of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen, and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the Board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The Chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the "Raise Hand" button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select "Yes," and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press *9 to raise and lower your hand. You must press *6 to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then they can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Stenbridge?
Good evening, Madam Chair, present.
Good evening, Ms. Better Brazza.
Good evening, Madam Chair, present.
Good evening, Laura Zoriz, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with 5 o'clock, with the hearing scheduled for 5:00 PM for the Subcommittee today. We start off with case BOA 1759609 with the address of 72 Leyden Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the Board?
Yes, hello, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Mary Kay Campbell with the Law Firm Drago in Tuscano at 11 Beacon Street. I'm here today on behalf of our client, the owner of 72 Leyden Street in East Boston, who is seeking to change the occupancy to a three-family dwelling in order to reflect the building's existing layout. The only violation he is seeking relief from is use census is in an EBR 2.5 sub-district. My client purchased this building last year with the existing layout of three units, and is therefore looking to have the occupancy updated to reflect that in order to provide additional housing and be able to fully utilize the building's current floor plans. I can pause now and take any questions from the Board.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Board?
No, Madam Chair, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. May I have a public testimony?
Madam Chair, I don't know if anyone from ONS is here?
I'll jump on, yes. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office could defer to the judge from this Board. A Butters meeting was held for this proposal. There were no concerns raised in that a Butters meeting, I understand. All right, no, excuse me, we submitted Subcommittee flyers out to a Butters within 300 feet. We did not receive any feedback. The applicant went on to meet with the Orient Heights Neighborhood Association, which voted overwhelmingly to support the proposal. I'm unaware of any concerns at this time, with that, we defer to the Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, no additional comments.
Would that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1772272 with the address of 364 Main Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the Board? Is anyone present for 364 Main Street?
Is Marley Kanda? Probably.
Madam Chair, we should move on and then come back later?
Yes, please.
Hi, I'm here, I'm sorry.
Okay, are you presenting for 364 Main Street?
Yes, I am the owner of 364 Main Street, and-
Identify yourself, name, address, and then what you're requesting?
Sure, Marley Kanda, 364 Main Street, Charlestown, Massachusetts, 02129. We are proposing renovating our basement, mostly for systems. We have oil heat, we have no AC, we have no French drain, we have no sump pump. So we would like to kind of prepare the house for the future, and in doing so, making all the changes in the basement, would also like to finish the basement as a living space for our children. We have two teenage boys, and while we're down there, we would just like to make it habitable space. And it exceeds the floor area ratio, which is why we need to be here. We also sent out the form to the, not sent out, but posted to all neighbors within 300 feet. We have heard no comments back on our proposal, and we are here with you tonight hoping for approval.
So can you clarify what type of living space you're proposing in the basement? Is it like a playroom or like a family-
It's like a playroom and then a craft area for the kids. So you can see there's a sitting area and a lounge area, and in the back corner, there's a workshop. Both boys like to do a lot of crafts, and that's where we propose a little sink and a mini fridge down there, as well as a toilet.
Questions from the Board?
Yeah, um, I don't think Jeff Hampton is on, correct? Or anyone?
I'm guessing not.
No, okay. So, you know, reading the recommendations of the BPD, basically, you know, it says that your project lies within the Sea Fraud District, but the work doesn't meet the threshold that requires Sea Fraud Review under Article 80. And so, and so basically, the BPD is kind of recommending to not approve the project because they're seeing kind of habitable spaces in the basement, but, you know, are you aware that the basement is vulnerable to flooding?
Correct.
And has it flooded since you've been there?
It has been damp, there's a rat slab floor, so we have had moisture issues. A lot of it was from a downspout from the neighbors that lost its bottom, and so water was coming in. We have never had standing water in the basement. But as I mentioned earlier, we don't have a French drain system in place, we don't have a sump pump. That is part of the work that we would like to do to protect the house a little bit more from the rising sea levels.
Right, so basically dwellings or habitable rooms are discouraged and kind of vulnerable areas. And so, Madam Chair and secretary, the idea that this is a playroom, not really a sleeping quarter, I'm okay kind of approving this scope of work as long as the owner is aware that they're vulnerable to flooding, and they should try to mitigate that, and they should not have any bedrooms in the basement. So I just-
No bedrooms.
I just wanted to make those comments.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I concur. With that, can we have a public testimony?
Madam Chairwoman and Board members, good evening. Cyggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This applicant completed the ONS community process. Our office oversaw distribution of an informational flyer to all parcels in a 300-foot radius, which solicited no comments. That background our office defers judgment to the Board. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, there are no additional comments at the moment.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to go with a motion of approval.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, ma'am.
Thank you very much, all.
Next, we have case BOA 1783484 with the address of 100 City Hall Plaza. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the Board?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Attorney Derek Small of a business address of 51 Dobson Road. And I'm here today seeking relief in the form of a conditional use permit for our proposed restaurant at 100 City Hall Plaza. We're here today seeking relief to remove the proviso to this petitioner only, which was given to a prior tenant of that space, which was Subway years ago. And now we are seeking to put another takeout restaurant there, La Neta, which is a taqueria, and my client owns one at 255 Newberry Street as well. And so again, we are here just to remove the proviso to this petitioner only and grant a new takeout license for the new restaurant that we're proposing.
Questions from the Board? Hearing done, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services regarding 100 City Hall Plaza. Our office differs with the Board's judgment on this matter. A community process is not required for this type of proposal, and we do not expect any community concerns regarding this project. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs with the Board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Next, we have case BOA 1702910 with the address of 93 Charter Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the Board?
That's the one missing, John. Is this the one you, yeah, will withdraw on?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just wanted to see if there was anyone present. Be with me. The note I have is that the applicant for 93 Charter Street, Ward 3, sent in an email to withdraw her project before the Board. Even though somebody has their hand raised.
Foster, are you raising your hand for this project? If you are, can you unmute yourself?
You don't need to go ahead.
I don't need to comment now that this has been withdrawn, so I guess no.
Okay, all right, so with that, may I have a motion?
Welcome to withdraw the case?
May I have a second?
Brazza's second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1759889 with the address of 18 Rutland Square. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the Board?
Is this the same thing? No, I don't see any urban partners. Okay, I think it's someone, Mark. I sent you an invitation to be on the panel section.
Hi, sorry, can you-
Are you here for 18 Rutland?
Yes, I am, I'm sorry, I thought our architect, Joe Holland, was going to be representing us on this. But I'm not sure everybody is. I'm actually the owner at 18 Rutland.
Okay, are you prepared to present yourself, or do you need a deferral?
No, I guess so, we'll present. I mean, we, I think we've submitted the plans, we've submitted notice to all the neighbors. I believe the Neighborhood Association has been supportive because the roof deck is, you know, is back from the street. It's not visible from any of the street views. It's not, frankly, it's smaller than the neighboring roof decks. There's no henhouse or anything, it's just stairs going up to it.
Are there questions from the Board?
No questions, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, with that, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the Board. In regards to 18 Rutland, the Mayor's Office will defer to the Board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including a distribution of Subcommittee flyers around the beginning of October. Our office did not receive any comment from the flyers, and they did meet with the Rutland Square Neighborhood Association and received support from the Neighborhood Association as well. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services will defer to the Board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1742622 with the address of 917 East Broadway. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the Board?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Mark Lacass, legal counsel for the homeowners Brandon Beck and Brenna Beck, seeking to change the occupancy of an existing commercial building, which historically has been a real estate office at the corner of East Broadway and P Street, conducting a complete historic renovation of what is quite a lovely property down in that stretch of East Broadway, and turning it into a single-family residence for the Beck family and their four children. Plans also include demolition of an old existing garage behind the main structure along P Street, and construction of a new garage with a second-floor addition on top of the new garage to provide approximately 1,000 square feet of additional living area to be connected to the house with sort of a corridor, which we'll see on the elevations that nicely mirrors the house. Can stop here on this slide. So the lower right-hand corner is a photo of the existing structure. It was for many years MCM Properties, a real estate office, and has that large plate glass window on the corner of East Broadway and P. And that will be removed, and the historic symmetry of the front of the structure will be restored. Next slide. And next slide, please. And keep going. These are all existing conditions, elevations, and... So the floor plans include, you know, living space on the ground floor of the property and bedrooms on the second floor of the existing structure, and bedroom area on the second floor above the new garage with a nice hallway connecting the existing structure to the new garage, retention of a lovely rear yard area to provide a nice measure of usable open space for the family, and parking for one car in the new garage, which is shown here on the upper portion of the plan. We could get to the elevations, I think those most dramatically demonstrate how nice this is. The zoning violations are relatively minor in scope in this part of South Boston. If you add something onto an existing structure, you need a conditional use permit. So for the second-floor addition on the top of the garage, a conditional use permit is sought, noting that it is well below the maximum height allowed in the sub-district, and we are also below the FAR. Let's stop here. So here's an elevation of the front of the building. So on the left-hand side, you will recall where those plate glass windows were will be restored to match the window fenestration on the right-hand side of the building, and that's the existing front door, which will serve as the main entrance on the Broadway side of the home. Next slide. Here is an elevation of the P Street side of the house. So Broadway, East Broadway, is on the right-hand side of your screen, and this is as if you're standing on P Street. Across the street, there's the new single bay garage door. That's the portion of the structure that's being reconstructed. And, oops, hold on, back to the other one. With the second floor on top of the garage, and then that sort of doorway and single window, that's like the connector piece between the existing structure and the new structure garage. And above the garage, you also see that the roof style and lines are being followed on the new structure to provide that nice symmetry. Next slide. This is an elevation from an adjoining property showing the new garage with the single vehicle and the doors that lead to a nice backyard area. Next slide. Opposite view elevation. Lots of technical drawings, and I believe there are a couple more elevations toward the end that nicely demonstrate the completed view of the property. The other zoning issues are off-street parking insufficient. For single-family dwelling, 1.5 is required in the sub-district. There's currently a single-car bay, and we're keeping the single-car bay, so that's an insufficient parking issue. The side yard insufficient and the rear yard insufficiency are existing conditions that are not being exacerbated by not only the addition of the garage, but we're actually improving that condition on the P Street side because the new garage will be further away from the abutting property than the existing garage, so we're improving the insufficiency on that portion of the property. The other one is an existing condition that's not being exacerbated. With that, I will pause and happy to take any questions from the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Lacass. Any questions from the Board?
No, other than I have to agree, it's a really beautiful residential structure.
They're, we're excited about turning in this-
Yeah, it's very beautiful.
They're forever home.
And- Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Anecdotally, I'd love to share this part of the story. It's that at our City Point Neighborhood Association meeting, following a terrific a butter meeting, we did our presentation, the Beck's introduced themselves and their family, and we got a round of applause. And Brenna said, "Is that good?" And I said, "I've never had applause at one of these things, ever." So it's been well-received, in short.
Excellent. With that, may I have public testimony?
Good evening, Cyggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This applicant completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted in a Butters meeting on August 5th, at which in a Butters raised concerns about rodent issues and about parking. Our office received 10 letters of support. Three of these letters signed an address in the 300-foot a Butters radius. The City Point Neighborhood Association voted to support this application. That background, our office defers judgment to the Board. Thank you.
Okay, we have somebody from the Office of, the Counselor Flynn.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This is Sydney Scanlon from Counselor Flynn's office. Counselor Flynn likes to go on record in support due to a good community process and feedback from neighbors in the City Point Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a City Point Neighborhood Association.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Luanne O'Connor, President to the City Point Neighborhood Association, and what Attorney Marcus has said is a very true statement. Appreciate the Board, appreciating the structure and the look of this particular home. This is what we strive for within the City Point Neighborhood Association. We'll have a lot coming before you, so please keep that in mind. We did take a vote, it was a unanimous vote, to support the project. That has never happened in my tenure as President. So we're pretty proud of this, we're pretty proud of the architect, the family, the proponent, as well as Attorney Lacass. It was a well, it was a really good effort to come together as a community and to keep our architecture and our housing stock intact. So thank you, it is supported.
Thank you.
There are no additional comments.
With that, may I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would love to put a motion forward of approval.
Great, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Good evening, Madam Chair. First, I'll say it looks like an excellent project, and we wish you the best of luck. Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you kindly.
Next, we have case BOA 1750660 with the address of 78 Harborview Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the Board?
Good evening, everyone. I am the applicant, I'm also the proponent of the project. I live at 78 Harborview Street, and I just would like to present my projects. This is a house I just purchased a year ago, and it has already have a space for the driveway, and would like to use the space as a driveway, it's on the side of the house. And as in the plan here, you can see we can park three compact cars, and which, asking for permit to do the, perform the curb cut in front of the house. And it's a 10-feet curb cut, and there is a, it was, the project was rejected because of a violation exceeding a total level accessory parking spaces, and the open space was not used sufficiently. So I'm asking for relief for this, to perform this project. And we have gone through the process of appealing, gone through the Butters meetings, and also the Seven Hill District, Seven Hill Civic Association meeting, and everyone is supporting this project, so they don't have any rejection, objections.
Right, with that, any questions from the Board?
The only question I have is where it says "Propose compact parking space." To me, that seems like a front yard parking, which typically is not allowed. So I'm a little bit surprised why the BPD didn't pick that up. That being said, are, you know, are you okay with having just two tandem parking spaces versus three?
That should be acceptable, yep, two is good, it's law.
Yep, okay, great, thanks, I don't have any further questions.
May I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services regarding 78 Harborview Street. Our office differs with the Board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including an Butters meeting on 8/25/25 that was attended by one community member, who did express some concern about the placement of the driveway on the property, but overall did not have an issue with the curb cut proposal part of the project. The applicant was connected with the Columbia Hills, excuse me, Columbia Seven Hill Civic Association and received support regarding the proposal. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs with the Board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have one person, a owner. Please, if you can unmute yourself.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes. You state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Vladimir Amnoni. I'm neighbor, next neighbor to this home, and doing this project. And we sent already opposing letter and supporting documents today to the Board.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you in support or opposition of the project?
Yes, we oppose the project because our next owner, we, even, you know, the, the neighbor has a right to apply, but we cannot support because- The neighbor has a right to apply, but uh we cannot support because this is a lot of conflict here. Uh first, as you can see from the their uh proposing curb cut plan. Uh. They are interfering with our. Uh with our property because the. Fence that is actually now our fence is on the property line, is actually one fifth from property line. Inside our property and as we mentioned in a, in a opposing letter. This is common, you know, for to prevent any dispute. Uh or for maintenance. But now what happened before there were bushes. The pre owner of this house, uh he removed bushes and uh put asphalt. And extended even inside our property. And now the. The asphalt putting pressure to our fence and the fence is falling down. And also other stuff they put. The lady came uh when they bought this house.
Yeah. And. Thank, thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from the owner on this before we proceed?
And Madam Chair, can I, can I also ask that? Yeah. The owner, can I also ask that the owner addresses? Um, the encroachment that I am seeing on the survey plot plan. Um, that the abutter just commented on. So the whole vinyl to the rear and aside is encroaching on other people's property. They can comment on that.
Uh, yes, I, so I did, um, I mean, the, the neighbor did, did have came to the bottom meeting and present his concern. However, um, however, because I, I'm, you can look at my proposal, the plan. We are only proposing to use our, the land, the piece of land on our property side to do the, to use as a driveway. Um, space. So we, we're, we're not using their, we're not using part of this uh property line to include as our parking space. And uh we go into, after we get this approval, we're going to build a fence to add the board at the property line, just kind of separate it. Um. So as you can see, I'm not asking to get, taking space from the neighborhood. To be used as a driveway for, for our, for our uh uh for our purpose.
So are you suggesting that the fence that is existing right now, you're going to relocate that fence, give back?
No, that fence, that fence belonged to the neighbor. Uh. We're not doing that. We're creating a new fence. That's gonna be at our property line, the uh uh within our property, within our property line. So we, so we're not, we're not using their, we're not using their space for our parking.
No, I understand. The property line is. Concrete paver, but the concrete pavers is exceeding to the other neighbor's fence. So. Are you telling me that the vinyl fence at the rear and aside does not belong to you? It belongs to your abutters? Can you clarify?
If you look at the, if you look at the, the drawing, the plan, the, the one, the vinyl on the back, the back of the house is belong to us. There's no vinyl, there's no vinyl um. Fence and uh uh on the side and the on the side is a wooden, wooden fence and it belonged to the neighbors.
Okay, but the vinyl fence at the rear is yours?
Yours, yes, ours.
And are you, and your drawing shows that you're encroaching the concrete pavers beyond your boundaries?
Um, I am, I'm not sure what you mean. The drawing.
Can, can someone pull the site plan, please? So right there. So if you get to, if you go to the northern portion. If you uh detail the northern portion of where it says concrete pavers, if you just get closer. If you can zoom in, yeah, zoom in more. Okay, so you can see that your pavers right now is being detailed all the way to your vinyl fence, which extends beyond your property line. Based on the survey.
What, what paver? The, the fence in the back is beyond the property line. We, we can, we can take it out. I mean, this because we didn't want the house is, so we don't know. We don't know what is, it's supposed to be at the, what the property line at the time. So if they're based on the drawing, if it's already past the, already past the neighbor, yeah, we can technically take it off.
Okay. If you have further questions, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion with um two provisos.
A motion of approval? Just to confirm.
Yeah, correct. A motion of approval, my apologies. I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with two provisos. Um, the first one being that we remove one of the proposed parking space. Um, so that you do not have front yard parking. You only have two spaces proposed. And the second proviso is that the project undergoes site plan review with B P D. To increase the permeability of the surface. So paying attention to the ground surface to improve permeability and um. And that's it. Thank you.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mister Stunbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Even do have a good night, everyone.
Next, we have case B O A one seven one zero four five four. With the address of one eighteen Bowden Street. If the applicant and or their representative are present, will they please explain to, case to the board? Is there anyone present for one? You, are you here from one eighteen Bowden Street?
Yes, sir. My name is Rami Sidani. I am a civil engineer with North County Group. Our firm did the architectural and the structural plans for the proposed church at one eighteen Bowden Street. We're here to amend the approved plan to have a usable space in the basement of the church. So this what, so this sheet here is the basement of the church. It's gonna have bathrooms. An office and is a meeting area for the congregation and also a kitchen. We have an elevator handicap lift to the second floor. Uh. The second floor will be the sanctuary with the mezzanines. Also has a stage where the. The priest will be standing and preaching. So this is the mezzanine, which will be on the third level to provide extra seating. This is the front elevation of the church. This is how the church will look like. This is the sides in the rear view. Yeah, that's a, that's a side view. This is the three D demonstration of the inside of the church. Some other angle. These are details of the bathrooms, the handicap bathrooms. Those are details of the windows that will be installed and then the columns, the architectural columns. In front of the church. So it's be, it's gonna be a decorative church. These are just the, this is the foundation plan. Footings, column location, the framing. Structural plans, more structural plans. This is cross section of the building. For the, the structural members. This is the roof framing and then the structural analysis at the end.
Okay, are there questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
So all the, all the work will be conducted in the existing basement?
No, this has not been built yet. The initial plans did not include usable space of the basement.
Okay.
The basement is at the street level.
So this will be a new, new structure?
New construction, correct.
Okay.
Okay, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jer. Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I'm the Dorchester Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting facilitated on June sixteenth. With no abutters in attendance, no concerns were raised and the opponent went on to present to Greater Bowden Geneva Neighborhood Association. Who voted in support of the proposal. To date, our office has received one letter of support from Meeting House Hill Civic Association supporting the renovation. Thank you for your time in the mayor's office, neighborhood services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mister Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much for your time. Have a good night.
Next, we have case B O A one seven four nine one four three. With the address of twenty nine Aldworth Street. If the applicant and or their representative are present, will they please explain the case to the board?
Yes. Hi, good evening, uh Madam Chairperson, members of the board. My name is Jonathan Paul. I am the owner of twenty nine Aldworth. Uh, and I'm joined with by Robert Brainard, who is uh with my architectural firm, Joe the Architect. Uh. We are seeking uh relief to add dormers to the rear uh of our home. That is to add a bedroom and a bath to accommodate our growing family. The only relief that we're seeking today is on the floor to area ratio. Uh. The reason being is that our property is zoned for two F five thousand, which requires a lot size of five thousand square feet. Our loss is, our lot is less than the required square footage, uh which contributes to the hardship and plays a role in the proposed F A R exceeding the allowable point six. By point zero seven. Um. We are making no changes to the roof height, to the light or the views of our neighbors. Um, uh, in addition to uh the relief that we're seeking. Uh, this is a hundred and twenty year old home that we love dearly. Um, we're replacing an A, um, an aging enclosed back patio. Uh, with an exterior patio. We're doing a lot of internal work interior to the home to bring uh the home um. Uh, more, more modernized and up to date. Um, we've, we've received extensive support from our neighbors. Uh, I've included in our application letters of support from our abutting neighbors and our downstairs neighbor. Uh, and we have uh been in front of and presented our plans to the uh neighborhood services for the city of Boston. Uh, the Jamaica Plain Association and the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. Uh, so with that, uh, I'm happy to take your questions and uh uh hope, uh, hope I can answer them.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I'm the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting facilitated on August seventh. That was very lightly attended with three abutters present and a voice recording from the current first floor tenant. Uh, all the butters present and recorded are in support of the proposal and the family. Next, the proposal was presented to Jamaica Plain Association on September eighth, who voted not to oppose. And Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council on September seventeenth, who voted in support of the proposal. Today, our office has received one letter from Jamaica Plain Association stating their stance of not opposing the proposal. Thank you for your time in the mayor's office and neighborhood services. We'd like to defer to the board.
Thank you.
No additional comments?
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
There a second?
Second.
Mister Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Next, we have case B O A one seven six six seven two two. With the address of sixty one Lewis Road. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. Robert Brainard with Joe the Architects for this project as well. Um, our project is just to essentially replace an existing rear enclosed porch with a new. Two-story addition that includes basement space. Um, much like the last project, this application and property is severely undersized for the lot district, so that resulted in. The hardship of the floor area ratio again. Um, essentially, the new proposed addition is going to be built in the exact same footprint as what's there currently. It's just going to become two stories. So obviously, that includes more floor area. Additionally, on the project, not subject to zoning relief is just interior reconfiguration and renovations of kitchen and other living spaces. Uh, so if anybody has any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I'm the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of a well-attended abutters meeting with the majority of abutters voicing support for the proposal and changes to the property. With one abutter voicing their concerns for the aesthetics of the proposal as they can view it from the rear. Uh, yard and inquired of the materials, windows and colors that may be used, as well as a concern for density and a precedent being set for the neighborhood. Next, the proponent presented Jamaica Plain Association on September tenth and Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council on September seventeenth, where they voted in support of the proposal. To date, our office has received one constituent letter of support. Thank you for your time in the mayor's office of neighborhood services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
There a second?
Second.
Mister Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case B O A one seven six six one one four. With the address of eight Preston Road. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Hi, good evening. I'm Anatbek Nachtegal from the Kubinov Architect uh in West Roxbury, eighty two Spring Street. I'm here to present Eric and Maura. Um, the owners, uh, this is a single family detached home in West Roxbury. Uh, the homeowners uh seeking to finish the existing basement and basically extending their living spaces. Uh, we are, the finished area will be around thousand square foot, so we are above the allowed F A R. And the only violation is S A R. Uh, there is no expansion of the building. Uh, we have a decent height, six foot ten for the finish, to finish the finish. Uh, the living spaces that they would like to do is uh, the homeowner is a um musician, so we're gonna do a music room and uh gym. And some living spaces. Pretty much wraps up the project.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good evening, Siggy Johnson with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This applicant has completed the community process. Our office oversaw distribution of an informational flyer to abutters in a three hundred foot radius, which solicited no comments to our office. That background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Uh, to additional comments?
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mister Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening.
Next, we have case B O A one seven two. One two two zero with the address of one twenty eight Gardner Street. If the applicant and they represent and or their representative are present, will they please explain to the board?
Hi, I'm, you can. Unmute yourself, please. No, we cannot hear you.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Oh, great. Good evening, uh, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Angelo Musto and I'm with my wife Darlene. We are the owners of one twenty eight Gardner Street and I'm proposing a renovation and a change of occupancy to a two-family. Um, at one twenty eight Gardner Street. The existing house was built in nineteen fifty as a Cape style home. Uh, which did have two floors of living space on six thousand seven hundred eighty-two square feet. The proposed house will keep the existing foundation and some of the structure, plus an additional unit footprint is being proposed. is being proposed in the backyard area attached to this house. By keeping the same foundation and utility infrastructure, I will greatly reduce the amount of building construction and noise impact to the neighborhood. The new project, when completed, will be a gable and detached duplex colonial home. The total square footage will be approximately thirty-six hundred square feet over two floors. And in the front unit, we'll have a covered porch eighteen feet wide by eight feet deep, and the back unit will have a ten-by-twelve open deck. The attic will have a recess deck with the storage area in the attic, but it will be unfinished. And there will be off-street parking for four vehicles and open green space in the back, front and side area with professional landscaping shrubs and hardscape. The reason for this change is for, occupancy change is for family use. Gardner Street has a beautiful residential community, close to access to many wonderful places we enjoy, such as Millennial Park, Ice Skating, and of course, the Tree Line Parkway. This part of Gardner Street does have other two families within steps of this home. And across the parkway, there are multi-unit apartment buildings that were recently built and are currently being built. I would just like to mention that at the neighborhood meetings, I did receive support from both of my abuddies. Thank you so much for allowing me to present this, and I will answer any question that you may have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This applicant completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abuddies meeting on August twentieth, at which no concerns were raised. The West Roxbury Neighborhood Council voted to support this application. With that background, our office defers judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yeah.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you, members of the board. Appreciate it.
Next, we have case BOA one seven five seven nine nine four, with the address of fifty-one to fifty-three Brookline Avenue. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, this is David Ingram, attorney at Gulston Stores located at One Post Office Court in Boston. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Orange Barrel Media, and join Jake Doll Valley from Orange Barrel. We are seeking a conditional use permit for a digital sign. We have a brief presentation, and I'll turn it over to Jake to speak first. I'm sorry, I believe these are the plans we submitted. We had a slide deck as well. Is it possible to turn? Yes, thank you. Great.
Thank you, and hello, everyone. I'm Jake Doll Valley, Development Director for Orange Barrel Media. Thank you for hearing us this evening. That page right there is perfect. As you can see, Orange Barrel Media operates a number of signs throughout the Boston area. All of our digital signs go through a full BPDA design review and receive BPDA license, as did this sign located at fifty-one Brookline. Next slide, please. Orange Barrel Media pride itself on not only architecturally integrating into the community, by also supporting and collaborating with local community nonprofits. Here, you can see a number of the organizations we have worked with in the city of Boston. Next slide, please. And here is a list of letters of support from some of those local organizations we have worked with in support of this project at fifty-one Brookline. Thank you, and I will pass it back to David.
Thanks, Jake. So the proposed sign would be located over the roof of the Sal's Pizza Building at fifty-one Brookline Avenue in the Fenway Neighborhood. It would replace the three static billboards located on the roof currently, as shown in these photos. In terms of approvals, the BPDA has approved the design of the sign. And Orange Barrel has also executed a license agreement with the BPDA, which includes operating requirements, as well as an annual license fee and revenue share. Regarding zoning, the sign is located in the Lands on a Street Entertainment District, the boundaries of which are shown on that, the prior slide. This district was created specifically to allow digital signs by conditional use permit, and a conditional use permit is the only zoning relief required for the sign. This slide shows run range of the sign from different, from Brookline Avenue. As you can see, the sign is oriented toward pedestrian viewpoints, and no portion of the sign extends over the sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, ma'am, for the testimony?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members. Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abuddies meeting on September twenty-third. The site does not have many residential abuddies, but members of various stakeholder organizations in the vicinity attended the meeting. There were a couple of concerns raised about the billboard possibly promoting gambling or alcohol. Various businesses and nonprofit organizations in the area have sent eight letters of support to the board. The Kenmore Square Association is in support of this application, and the applicant also met with the Fenway Civic Association. That background, our office defers judgment to the board. Thank you.
I'm not sure if the Paul Sorrentino, are you speaking on this project? And if no, we have somebody from the, Sam Courage, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Matt the Courage with Counselor Sharon Durkin's office. The council is in support of this proposal. We've been in contact with the proponent, as well as many neighborhood associations and abuddies who have also given support for this proposal. Thanks so much.
Okay, Madam Chair, there are no additional comments?
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval with a proviso that the project undergoes BPD design review for signage and compliance.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yeah.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a re-discussion case scheduled five, five P M. This is for case BOA one seven six nine one zero three, with the address of twenty-six Wyndham Street. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Hi, I'm Mr. Stunbridge. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Mike Ross from the law from Prince Lobel. I'm here with my client, the owner of this property, Francis Huang. This is a proposal to add a two-story addition to the rear of an existing one-family home. The addition is consistent with other additions in the neighborhood, and will make better utilization of the lot and open space on the property. If you go to the site plan, the next slide, the site, or the next slide after this one. There you go. Thank you. The site plan shows how the rear addition will line up directly behind the existing house, and the addition will replace an existing shed and pathways, so as to consolidate all remaining open space to the left side of the rear yard, thereby optimizing the space for maximum usage. We showed some context photos here, just to give you a sense of the backyards of our, within the block we're in, and how there's hardscape and structures and sheds and additions along there. There's a very similar construction project that was done on the corner of Hope Dale and Sorento, almost exactly as what we're proposing here. The we were cited for FAR side yard and rear yard. The BPDA called those dimensions in character with the surrounding block. We're going to remove the existing mudroom in order to make a connected rear structure. And, yeah, I guess I'd just say that the elevations that you're looking at here, they show how the addition will sit behind the existing structure, making it mostly invisible from the street. And we've submitted six letters of support from nearby residents who live right in this neighborhood, and the BPDA is recommending approval of this project. I'll pause there, see if I can answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
So this is going from to a one-family to two-family zoning, or a one-family plus ADU?
Yeah, it's an ADU, really. It's not going, yeah. I mean, it's funny, the ADU in the zoning, it doesn't allow for bumpouts. So if you do a bump out like this with an ADU, they don't even call it an ADU, because it doesn't technically exist within the zoning. I think the city's kind of, you know, in the process of fixing that, but right now, the only ADU in the zoning code is if you build it into your existing structure.
Right, as a right, as an, as a right.
As a right, that's
Right, so is it, is it a two-family then?
It's a one-family.
Right, but, so, but it looks like two units, so is it going from a one-family to a two-family?
It is not. It would be going from a one-family to a one-family with an ADU. The use category would not change on this. It's really an extension off the rear of this project. You know, you might have, you might
Because right now, the, right now, the violations are side yard, rear yard, floor area, but not in
Not in use category, exactly.
I think, so I think there's, there's probably an error in the violation. Is Caroline on? Is Caroline on?
Yes.
Oh, Caroline, can you, can you clarify? Am I catching that correctly? That the violations are assuming that it's just a one-family, but it's not. It's either a one-family plus ADU, but it's not mentioned, but it's really like a two-family, as, as Mike Ross just said, that you don't really have an ADU as a right. So I don't know if the violation was not caught as in use. Can you, can you expand on that?
I can only say that the board can grant relief for only what's listed in the refusal letter. This could be something I can check back on tomorrow with the plans examiner. But as of right now, the board can only vote on what was stated in the refusal letter.
Let me try, if I could, Ms. Better Brazza. If this was an ADU and if this was in front of you, it would still say one-family. It wouldn't say one-family plus ADU. It wouldn't say two-family. It would just say one-family. The reason why we're cited is because we're not an ADU that's built within the structure, like in the basement or in the attic, which, if that was in front of you, it would still just be a one-family. So it's, you're, you're, you're kind of picking up on what I was saying earlier that
Yeah, I, so I think, I think
There's no way that this would be cited as a two-family is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I think, I, um, can you tell me why it's appearing in front of us as a re-discussion?
Well, because it's the owner of this property is looking to put in extension, which is extensively what this is.
Sorry, Mr. Ross. What, re-discussion was because it didn't get to go
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, I
Because what? Say it again?
It wasn't able to go the last time because our interpretations, Hansi took like two hours, it took like an hour and a half.
So I, um, I asked
Minutes here.
I asked for it to be deferred last time, because I was getting married, believe it or not. So that, that is why I'm back here on a re-discuss
There was no, there was no issue, Ms. Brazza, just
Okay, so, Madam, Madam Chair, I think, if I, if it's okay with you, I would like to put a motion to defer to the full board, because I know that BPD would be there, and I know at least Caroline can check in with the plan examiner. I think this is really important, and, and I just would like to say, because I, I do think that we are encouraging this type of development to supply additional housing, and I think it's important that the full board and Jeff Hampton of BPD is there to just answer some of my questions. I think it'll be helpful, because as we see more projects potentially come in front of us, it would be good to have that clarity from BPD. So with that, I, I, when you're ready for a motion, I like to, to recommend that.
Okay, well, I'm going to take public testimony.
Yep.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the mayor's office is going to defer to the judgment of this board, some background information, the community process. Our office held an abuddies meeting on August nineteenth. In that meeting, there were concerns expressed from some abuddies regarding the proposed setback, I think specifically the rear setback, feeling that it was going to set a dangerous precedent for that area and lead to more built, more households expanding back towards the property line. The All Saints Civic Association echoed those concerns, and also expressed that they would send in a letter of opposition. I have not directly seen that letter, but that was what was expressed in an email that I saw. And as you heard from the applicant, they also have letters of support that the board should have access to. That information will defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have, I think, I'm not sure if it's part of the team, but the name, I think he was Gene One? The person, the first
Yes, yes, this is Gene One. I live on fifty-two Hope Dale. So Hope Dale Street is next to Wyndham. So it's like a three-minute walk to Francis's house. So I, I'm fully supporting this expansion as an ADU. I mean, living here for more than seven years, I realize that it is a critical housing shortage in the, in, I mean, in this neighborhood and in the greater Boston area. And a lot of people trying to find housing, but they couldn't. And, and also existing homeowners, they're trying to, I mean, expand their area, get more additional space, and this area is relatively old. It's all built over a hundred years ago. The house size is kind of small. So I, I think that, I know that Francis worked with his architect to make a very good design, to still have with all the consideration to the neighbors. So this is, I know that this is a good approach. So as a neighbor, I fully supporting his plan. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Priscilla Anderson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Priscilla Anderson. I live at thirty Wyndham Street, so I'm two houses away from this property. I am opposed to the rear setback that is requested for relief, and I'm concerned about safety issues. The existing structure is twenty-six feet from the rear, and the request is for just three feet between the new residential structure and the back fence. This is narrow evener, even than the four-foot minimum for smaller accessory structures, and the current accessory structure is even further away from that. So my concerns are that the three-foot width of the rear setback would impede firefighting access and would impede the ability of the engineered earth in the back of all of our homes to absorb water from floods, and we are a neighborhood that is at a near-term flood risk. And thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. And next, we have Ikoto.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm a director abudda. I'm at twenty-four Wyndham Street, and my concerns are similar to Priscilla's. But in addition to that, I know that all the neighbors' backyards around here are of a similar size. And many of them said, if we allow one to go in, then everyone will go in, which would increase the density significantly in the neighborhood. Not to mention the fact that if we should have a fire, especially in this type of neighborhood, which is all wooden homes, it would spread rather quickly throughout the neighborhood, even though we do have a fire station that they say can be here in three minutes. But as you all know, a neighborhood of all wooden structures near itself can, can catch on fire and probably lose the whole neighborhood. So my, my concern, of course, is the increased density that is going to occur, and many neighbors that I have talked to have said, if he gets it, then I'm going to want the same thing. So, which, of course, would
Thank, thank you.
Yeah.
Understood. Are there any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, can I respond quickly?
Yes.
Just to say that the new structure, removing the old shed and the realigning of it, it's actually almost exactly the same open space as before. The existing open space is four ninety-five square feet. We are proposing four eighty-six square feet. We're talking about a, what, a nine, an eleven square foot loss from this new structure. And the Boston Planning Board has commented on the rear yard setback, that it's three feet from the, from the rear yard. And they said that although this is a substantial shortfall, similar conditions are common in the neighborhood, which is why I tried to show you the backyards of the existing properties. You have everything.
It's common with sheds. I looked at the, those, those, those drawings. It's common with sheds. I looked at the, those, those, those drawings. It's common when there is the topology of a garage shed at the rear. But it's not common to see, um, a residential structure three feet from the rear yard. So I just wanted to provide that clarification.
Okay, well, you know, the BPDA, you know, didn't just limit it to sheds, and it's not just limited to sheds in this very block. In this block, you have additions that, uh, go off the back of these properties. They're small lots, and throughout this neighborhood, you see a lot of these additions. This addition is small and tasteful and manicured. It's not, you know, it's not trying to take the whole backyard. It's just taking half of that backyard and. Only taking additional eleven square feet.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Ross. Given, given, uh, Ms. Better Brazza's. Expected, uh, motion, I think we can save this for the full board. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm just listening to the residents and the butters. I think it. Um, it's a very good idea to bring this project forward to the full board. So with that, I'm going to put a motion of deferral for the next full board hearing.
And that would be November eighteenth?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. See you then. All right, good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Night, folks.
Thank you.